Are there any, any additions or corrections to the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. You got to real call. Um Craig. Mark.
Present via Zoom.
Hey Ron.
Present.
Jenny.
Here.
Brad. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Uh, item two, we got public comment. On December 10th, 2020, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 277 to adapt rules of procedure that include a structure for public comment. Each meeting agenda includes two opportunities for public comment. The first public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A separate second public comment period is reserved for public statements on any matter or issue that is relevant in Jermaine County government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to, to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject matters. However, failure to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The Board of Chairperson reserves the right to sound like Gavel when the audience applauds or drives a speaker. The board thanks you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Is there any public comment? No public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone. We got item three, appointments. Three A Drain Commissioner Mike Dematio related to the inter-county drain. Mr. Dematio, come on up and have a seat.
Thank you. So I'll give you a brief history in two, in 1917, there was a inter-county drain established called the Rifle River Inter-County Drain. Included Aronak County while the entire Rifle River. The records are incomplete, so they decided that they couldn't do anything with it because their records are incomplete. It wasn't clear whether it was actually a legal inter-county drain. So the Aronak County Drain Commissioner Larry Davis had a lot of log jams from the big rainstorm last year. And at quite an expense to clean them out, he wants to include Ogama County in the drainage assessment district, which would mean any project that's done in that, or that Rifle River drain, the cost would be shared by Ogama County. Every township in Ogama County is involved in this, with the exception of Edwards, which is in the Tidewassee Watershed. Not the whole township, but parts of, or all of every township is involved in this. So what it's going to involve is a special assessment district. And anybody in that watershed is going to be liable for assessment in perpetuity. Any project that's done, they're going to help share the cost. My opinion is that we should, um, we should. Yeah, we should, uh, not, we, we should, we should oppose this because I don't think our benefit is enough to make it worth our while. So. So my recommendation, and I've talked to Tim, your administrator, and my recommendation is that you adopt a resolution. And we will send that to, because the problem is normally I would sit on that drainage board with Aronak County, but since I own lands in the district, it disqualifies me. So I'm, I am not a voting member. So they appointed a special commissioner. Who was Terry Walters, Rain Commissioner of Glavine County. So he's going to be the, there's going to be two votes, be him and Aronak County. Now, if he votes nay, and Aronak, I know is going to vote yes, then Mike Greg from the Department of Agriculture has the swing vote. So, and I'm not sure how Mike's going on this. I know him very well, but I'm not, I haven't discussed it with him because I don't want to. I just don't know. But the first thing we need to do is we need to get Terry Edwards to vote no. So he's a special commissioner. So I think we need to.
A special commissioner.
Terry Walters, excuse me.
Special commissioner for what?
For this drainage board, the inter-count, so the.
So he's Ogama County's representative?
He is.
Okay.
It's normally, the statute says, uh, it's normally a. It's, it's normally a drain commissioner from a contiguous county. And so it was between Roscommon, Gladwin, and Iosco. And my choice was not Gladwin. I like Terry. I know him fairly well, but that was my choice, but they didn't take my recommendation. So he's going to be representing Ogama County on this drainage board. And possibly, as long as I own land in this proposed assessment district, I have some rentals unless I sell them all. Probably forever, he will be, Gladwin County will be on this drainage board instead of me. So I would like to, uh, pass, have you pass a resolution in opposition of this and, and send it to Terry Walters. And Mike Gray from Michigan Department of Agriculture. Mike, I think it's kind of on the fence on this. I'm not sure. And we can also send one to Larry Davis from Aronak County. I know, pretty sure, I know how he's going to vote, but when are you sending one? So that's what I like to do. So Tim, you want to go through a little bit, the logistics of this?
Sure. Um, yeah, the resolution is somewhat simple. We would have it ready for you next week. That would outline obviously where the drain is and so on, but would just simply state if you were inclined to your opposition to that project. We would then share that resolution with probably each of the communities that's directly involved in Ogama County. So that they're aware of the board's position as well. At that point, really it ends up in the hands of this committee that the drain commissioner was describing. They literally have autonomy when it comes to this, if they will make the final.
There's no voting. There's public hearings, but there's no voting. The only votes are by the drain commissioners. And also I forgot to add, I've contacted, I haven't contacted them all yet, but I'm in the process of it. I've contacted, I'm contacting every township, plus the road commission to get them to do the same thing. So hopefully this deluge of emails and resolutions, we send them to Gladwin County, maybe it'll help make us decision. May not help, but it may.
Is there any advantages to this for Ogama County?
Well, the, the, the law states that the advantage you have is you contribute water to this. That's what it boils down to. My position is that we do gain an advantage because we contribute water to this, but the advantage is outweighed by the liabilities. Because every year, let's say there's 10,000 parcels in Ogama County, but I have to put together an assessment role for the equalization department. If there's 10,000 parcels, I don't have the software to do that or the office. I don't even have an office. I hired somebody to do that. And that could cost up to, I, I checked with him because he does some other ones for me. It could cost up to $10,000 a year just to send out the assessment role. Because every year you got to put that on the taxes because it's a special assessment, like a road assessment or anything. So the benefit outweighs the liability, in my opinion, and I think we should, uh, we should let them know that we're, we're against it. So.
Basically, I'll just raise taxes, raise, it's going to raise taxes, correct?
It would, it would, uh. Once we were part of this inter-county drain, it, it could possibly, if we ever had a project to do, say the high banks, they want to do some stream bank restoration. It's possible that that could be a project that was paid for out of the inter-county drain, which meant Aronak County would share that cost as well. But you know, that's kind of far fetched whether they would do that or not. Normally drainage just is, when they do projects, is to speed it up because it's not getting away fast enough. So, uh, uh, like now the Whitney Inter-County Drain that we're involved in, you may, may not be familiar with that, but that went on for about 20 years before finally came to, you know, completed. But that was done because of all the sediment washing out into, into Lake Huron. So that was more of a sedimentation. Yeah, we got involved in that too. We, we actually voted against that. We had a hearing of necessity. We voted against that two of three, and the circuit judge overruled us. So, uh, uh, that ended up costing about. Oh, I don't know, two and a half million dollars or so. So. And that's an ongoing thing to constant maintenance. The town, the, the assessment district can have to be constantly assessed, take care of the main, is trees falling and that stuff like that. So.
Any questions for Mr. Dematio?
What would be the rate of assessment if, if they?
You, you don't know. That's the, that's the, uh, one of the sticking points of these projects. You don't know, you can estimate what the scope is, but you don't really know until the thing is, is created because you got to get engineering done. You got to get, uh, and they do the, they do the watershed map with a thing called LiDAR, which is, they say it's accurate to one or two feet. So, uh, they don't even know for sure what the boundaries are yet. And they actually have a hearing, uh, when they include people in this assessment district, they have a hearing where you can testify. You can say, I'm not in this drainage district. And you go to a public hearing and you prove that you're not even in this drainage. My water runs into the Osabo or my water runs into the Tidewassee. So they have a hearing for that as well. But so you don't know what the scope of the project is. What they do is they, at some point they come up with a number because they got to get, maybe they get estimates from contractors. And then they, um, then you, then you divide that up amongst the assessment district. But one hearing we have is, is, uh, and again, I may not have anything to say about this, but they decide what percentage each county is going to be liable for, like for the instance of, wait, you drain, we have like 1.6% of the watershed. I settle on 2% because it wasn't worth the struggle and it wasn't that much. So. And after, and anything that happens after that, if it's a hundred thousand dollar project, we pay 2% of that. So then it's up to me to dole that out however I think is equitable. And that's how it's done. So once, once we'll have, we'll have a hearing where we, uh, the commissioners would decide what percentages they're going to accept. And if they can't agree on it, then again, the Michigan Department of Agriculture will cast a deciding vote. We can appeal that to the state tax tribunal if we want to. Um, but that's how that works. And once we decide on a percentage, then any project that's done, Ogama County pays that percentage. And it's up to the drain commissioner or the person acting for the drain commissioner to decide how he disperses that. You know, it might be your proximity to the, to the, uh, to the drain, to the river. It might be based on acreage. It just depends on however he wants to do it. So.
It appears by the map I'm looking at that we're three times this, our area is three times the size of Aronak.
Two thirds at least, but, uh, that's not always the determining factor. It's based on, on benefits and contribution, and we definitely contribute. Uh, but, uh. I don't know. So I think it's worth a shot to, to oppose it. It doesn't cost anything.
Contacting the township supervisors.
Contacted everyone. No, I'm, I don't know why anybody would be.
Well, I'm just asking.
No, no.
Nobody that's called me is in favor of it.
You know, it's possible, without, without opening up a can of worms, it's possible that, you know, in Aronak County, they have the flooding. It's possible that if obstructions were cleared out, maybe that water could get away a little faster. Who knows? I don't know. That's possible benefit, but I don't think we have any flooding speak of in Ogama County, do we, for the Rifle River? Not that I know of. Most of it's down in Aronak County.
Yeah, nothing compares though.
So, but basically our benefit is the fact that we contribute water. That's just the way the drain laws are, are, uh, put together. So we get a benefit. My argument is the benefit is not worth the liability. So.
We'll drop a resolution.
Chairman, I'd like to recommend opposing this.
So I think we're going to do that. And when we do that, we will give you a list of people we would like you to send that to. It'll be Gladwin County. Mike Greg from, and he's looking forward to it because he wants to see it. Because I, I really think he's, I don't think he's necessarily in favor of this. And we'll also send one to Aronak, even though it won't do any good, but we'll send it there anyway. So.
You'll keep us updated?
Right. And well, you said that should be ready like Monday-ish and we'll have a list of who we'd like you to email it to. And we'll go from there. And they should, at the hearing, they should, they have to provide evidence that they got. It's not just testimonies, evidence, phone calls. They can say, we got 63 phone calls. If you send them a letter, they, they, they should take those letters to the hearing. They don't have to read them, but necessarily, but they's got to say, we've got 16 letters in opposition. They can want to read them, they can, but they should present that as evidence at the hearing. So, and I know Mike Greg will from MDA because he's, he's, uh, pretty sharp. So. But my, my recommendation will be for everybody to call Gladwin County Grain Office and voice your opposition. Because his name, if you've seen the letter, his, his name isn't even on that letter. It's my name. It sounds like it's coming from me, but it's not coming from me. So. And it says I'm on the board, uh, one of the drain commissioners, and I'm not. It's Terry Edwards, acting in my behalf. Or, uh, yeah, I keep, I get, those two are not even that close to, you know, like, I don't know, I get confused.
County Attorney Greg Mian called me yesterday and mentioned he might have something to say about this too, if you want to.
Greg?
Yeah, just real brief, um, perfect statement. Appreciate how you presented that, sir. I would just add into that, in addition to sending, uh, the resolution to the commissioners and political individuals that have spoken to, the real power lies in the individual homeowners who are going to be subjugated by this assessment for now until time immemorial. And that assessment can change over time. It can affect, uh, property values. And I think that there should be a better evaluation of whether an assessment district is needed based upon what can be done. So I would think politically, we also may want to assist in sending out information to those residents that are within Ogama County. Uh, that would be on top of sending it to the political individuals that were already spoken to. That's it.
So you're thinking like a, like a FAQ, well, there was an FAQ. Did you get a, see a copy of the letter?
I did, sir.
And had FAQ's on there, something similar to that, or what do you?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, because there's quite a few, that would be quite a, quite a undertaking because there's, I don't know how many. I'd have to get the mailing list because we actually, I didn't, they actually hired a company to do the mailings because there are so many people. So I'm not even, I don't even have the mailing list. So I'm not sure. I know it's quite a bit of activity on Facebook now. Um, of course.
It may ma, it may not make sense monetarily to mail out to everyone, but I think that we should find ways politically to get the individual homeowners involved. If that means having town hall meetings or, or, um, having it on the Ogama County website, uh, going to the different townships in, involved and having meetings there so that the public can become aware. We just don't want the public who really has the power to put the pressure upon those who are making the decision to just feel that they have no power. They really can make the decision, uh, and help the decision to be made that an, uh, an assessment district is not appropriate at this time. You haven't done your due diligence to determine what other alternatives are, and let's look at those first.
And, and that's, that's a great idea, but the problem is that, uh, all of the townships have already met in their next meetings after the hearing. So, uh, that probably isn't going to happen unless they call, they'll call a special meeting to, they have to call a special meeting to adopt the resolution. And they have to notice that. So maybe some people would, would come to that, but.
Mark?
You know, and they didn't put my phone, every, everybody's called me, has got my, my name, my number off the county website. And, uh, and I don't have any problem at all answering the phone. So certainly anybody wants to, if anybody calls any township people or you commissioners, I would just, them call me.
Okay.
And it may, if I don't answer the phone, just leave a message because the, I may be talking to somebody else or I may, who knows? I might be taking a nap.
What's your contact? How do we find your contact information, sir?
Well, my cell is 312-1130-999. My email is Dematio, and that's on the county website as well. Dematio M K Michael, what's the one used for K? Culture?
King.
King. Anyway, M K, Dematio M K at gmail dot com.
We're already getting, uh, questions from the public already.
Yeah.
Letters that they already got.
Well, like, this thing is kind of, it's been kind of rushed, rushed through. I mean, we, we had a meeting in, uh, oh, a month or so ago, just kind of an informational meeting, and I knew that there were, it was, but this, I knew it was, it was in the horizon, but this is kind of, in the last week or so, it's been accelerated. So I didn't have time to, to get with the, first of all, I, I, I should have known, but I didn't, that I was going to be disqualified because I knew that statute was there, but you know, the boards I sit on before, I was, that wasn't the case. So I, I'd forgotten. And I was just informed of that a few days ago, and then my wheels started turning. That's when I started doing all this stuff because I was going to vote no. And that would put the, the, uh, onus on, is that the right word, Craig? Onus?
Sounds a little bit close. That is correct.
Thank you. That would put the onus on Mike Greg from Department of Agriculture. So that's all I'm trying to do right now is get, uh, Terry Walters from, from Gladwin to do what I was going to do. So. And I think, I think, uh, Mike Greg is sympathetic to us and I wouldn't be surprised if he said no. So I can't guarantee it, but I'd be surprised.
Well, I just want you to know that if you need, um, I'm willing to show up at any meeting between now and the vote for any of the citizens of the townships in Ogama County to present at least a legal, um, basis for what can happen, what their rights are and what to do. You just need to call me and, and I'll be there.
How about the, how about the public hearing on the 30th?
I'll be there.
Oh, you'll be there anyway?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Because, um, the law, the drainage laws in a nutshell basically state that if you live up here and your buddy lives down here and your natural drainage runs across to his property, he has to accept it. That's what it all boils down to. So this is kind of a case of that. This is not a natural or a man-made drain, which is what most of these laws are, are, um, are, are passed to, to address. It's not a man-made drain. It's a natural drain. The fact that it's a natural drain does not necessarily mean it can't be a county drain, but it is different than a county drain. So. But the law states they have to accept our water. So as long as we don't, don't do something to speed it up, change its course, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, and usually it's a matter of attorneys and judges and that sort of thing. So. But that's where we're at. Any, any other questions? And y'all got my contact info and, and you call me anytime, preferably not after about nine at night, but.
Thank you, sir. We'll drop a resolution.
Yeah. So you should be getting that Monday-ish. And in the meantime, I will, I'll get a list of you of the emails that I want to send it to, and we'll go from there. Craig, you can call me anytime.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Is it worth sticking around or should I leave?
Oh, yeah. It's entertaining.
Three B, we have sheriff.
Good afternoon.
Hi. You're the school resource officer agreement for 2021 and 2022 school year.
Yeah, we were presented the contract for West French District schools. Same contract as last year, same price, 57,1. I'm looking for a resolution to accept this so we can lock this in and get our resource officer in there in place. Just have a safe.
Just to say, this really is the contract from last year. As you'll see, the dates are all reflective of last year. So if we agree to do this, I'll get in there, correct that.
I still got last year's date.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any questions?
We're not going to get any kind of increase in it. The week. Over here.
Any questions? Commissioner Serbrook, any questions?
This is the contract cover of all the wages and fringes are just a portion. I'm not clear on that.
Covers $57,100.
Basically for the nine months, not for the year.
Right.
Uh, that was.
Was that your question, sir?
Answer's my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Rebecca? Okay, and I, uh, internal investigation follow-up report.
We're sure to receive the email from Mr. Mian that had the items for follow-up that were listed. And a extensive conversation with younger sheriff yesterday, so I don't want to take it from there.
Yeah, if you've all received it, what I did was just take those and just researched and put together some notes as far as what's transpired in regards to each of the topics. So we'll just go down the line with number one, the sheriff department employees are aware of the rules and policies regarding the use of the lean system. Basically with the lean, uh, the first six months that you are employed as a law enforcement officer, you're required to become an operator in the lean. So that process is an online training to become an operator user of the lean system. Uh, and that comes along with a security awareness training, which is basically your network safety and security. There's three different modules. This is all put on through the state of Michigan as part of the lean operator certification process. Under the MyTrain, I don't know if you're familiar with the MyTrain system, but that's the state of Michigan training where they put all their online training stuff. After that initial, uh, the other requirements are that each employee is required to then recertify every two years via the same online testing process. So they have to review the lean policies, procedures, everything that goes along with use of lean. And then they are required to take and pass an online test. Then, and that also includes again, that security awareness. There are three modules that are taken also in that testing process. Uh, we do have a lean tack. Well, lean tack is the next level of trainer. Basically he's responsible for ensuring that all the operators do their required training, keeping the training documents, documentation current. Uh, the lean audit, uh, occurs every three years through the state of Michigan of our lean use of records. And lastly on that, our most recent testing for our department was conducted April, May for all our employees through this process. So that's kind of where we're at, uh, number one. Uh, number two, references, the sheriff office and employees are aware of the SOPs for which they, they are governed, their activities and with the public, specifically SOP 334, completion of reports of 412 gifts, 4.5 and partial attitude. Basically in February of this year, we started review and revision of the SOPs for the, the office. Sorry, Mark, I said department earlier.
All right. I forgave you, Paul.
So we, we started that review and revision process in February. That was in part with the new administration taking over and also as part of the, we referenced before, the Department of Justice recommendations and, and to go along with the current climate type of stuff. So that initial revision was completed in May. It was posted and it was made aware to all the employees that the revision was finalized and for them to all go through a review process with that. So with the review and posting of it, it was also implemented to where after that is completed by each employee that they sign a document that indicates that they reviewed the SOPs, understand the SOPs, then I keep that on file for our records that they've went through and reviewed the SOPs. Moving forward, uh, we plan on looking at the SOPs on an annual basis. Having the employees do the same on an annual basis with corresponding documentation of that process. And of course, if there's any policy changes in between those two annual reviews, we'll, we'll react accordingly. Number three, that a policy has been put into place as it relates to vendors and sheriff deputies engagement, business, barter and related conflicts of interest concerns. We currently have policies in place that have been reviewed by the employees as a part of number two. We also have our conversation yesterday, there are efforts underway with the county administrator in regards to policy and training in regards to issues at a county level. So that will also be addressed at that level.
To add to that, it's, it's becoming urgent because before we could even spend any of that ARPA money, we actually have to follow the guidelines of the federal government, which are on point for these subjects. So that's going to be something that will be organization-wide. It won't be just department-specific. And we'll have to probably talk about how we monitor that and so on. But, uh, this is something we have to do regardless as an organization. So we'll dovetail nicely.
Thanks, sir. Number four is that the process of sheriff's deputies keeping silent when they. Uh, number four is that the process of sheriff's deputies keeping silent when they see something wrong internally or externally must change. To address this, you know, I, I looked through the different things. As part of the SOP revision, policy number thirty-one was revised as recommended by the Department of Justice. And part of that revision does include adding, um, a duty to intervene. And basically there is a paragraph in that SOP, uh, on the use of force. A lot of the information did come from the Department of Justice, but it does have, uh, in there, uh, a duty to intervene by the employees to prevent misconduct, problematic behavior, which leads to fewer citizen complaints, member grievances, job security integrity of all members, et cetera. It's listed in the policy. Uh, the change of policy requires that all members must recognize and act upon the duty to intervene to prevent or stop any member from conducting any act that is unethical or that violates law or policy. So that is a part of the SOP that was incorporated as part of the BOJ, and I think that addresses number four. Um, you know, we do as an administration have an open door policy. When we do recognize that there are issues or, uh, items that need to be addressed, they're discussed, researched, solutions or actions are disseminated and documented, uh, moving forward. So that's, that's a part for number four. Number five was blank, so I found that one easy to, to research. Um, number six, the sheriff and employees are aware of the scum, the scumatory treatment harassment. Retaliation was protected under title VCII in Michigan Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act. The SOP and county policies do reflect, uh, compliance with this act, uh, but also in the discussion yesterday with the county administrator, there's training being developed to further address this issue, not only at the department, but at county level, countywide level. So work with him to make sure that number five too was further explored. So with that, that's what I came up with to address bullet points that are part of the internal investigation. Questions?
You looking at me for?
Well, you're the board chair, so.
Well, I, I guess, I, I guess I, I appreciate all of that, that you, uh, it sounds like you're definitely, uh, uh, implementing some, uh, policies and procedures that, that definitely needed some updating and, and review. With that, I, I guess my question would, would be with that internal investigation, um, you hadn't looked at some of them things you had stated. So with these updated, with these updates and, and things, different issues that were brought to your attention that, that were not looked at, um.
I guess I'm not.
I know. And that's what my question is, I guess, let me, let me, give me a second to think of my questions. Anybody else have a, any questions? Were any of these policies broke? I shouldn't say that broke, I guess that's not my correct terminology here.
The time, if I may, I think.
Where are your areas of highest concern, I guess?
Well, the whole SOPs were of a concern, because it had been several years since they'd been addressed. But these revisions that I'm talking about that occurred during this process, the internal investigation timeline is prior to. So the violations of SOPs would have been the previous version of it, would be my answer to that, because these new revised ones do, did not start the process till February and didn't officially take effect till May.
But when, when, when we were discussing what, uh, what our internal, or Greg's internal investigation found, some of them findings you had not, uh, looked into. Since then, our last meeting, have you had an opportunity to look into?
Oh, you referenced like the, the lean?
Um, yeah, I think there's three different that, that you had skimmed over, I believe was the wording. Some different findings that were noted, have you now had an opportunity to, to dig deeper?
Yes, there are actions that have been taken, communications with the Michigan State Police and the lean department. We've opened up a couple of different avenues to start addressing those particular items that are still left on.
Okay, so they are being looked into on your end?
Correct.
Okay.
And with the assistance of lean, because of the nature of lean, uh, and contacts with MSP. So that communication has been open and we're looking into that, yes.
Because it's a pretty, pretty strict violation, correct?
It is a violation, there's alleged violations that have occurred. We confirm that with our auditor through conversation, and now it's a matter of, okay, process and trying to determine if the allegations are true and if they do have validity for violation.
Okay, so you answered my question, is that you're looking into it?
Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Scott?
Oh, I, I think what you're doing, updating, uh, it's, it's a great thing. I mean, you know from your past, your, your job history and mine, that you gotta stay right on top of this stuff. It just hurts problems later on down the road. The last thing you want to hear is, oh, I never was told that, you know? And, uh, you know, when they, they, you know, the lease management, we had to sign off all the time. Any revision you had to train for and sign off for, it's just, you have to do it. It seems like common sense not to, but you have to.
Commissioner, uh, Serbrook?
I'm satisfied with, uh, the direction that things are going. We're looking into it, uh, with assistance, the MSP lean, so I'm satisfied so far.
Thank you, thank you.
Did Greg have any questions?
Greg?
I didn't. No, I have no questions, thank you, you guys have gotten them all.
Thank you.
Discussion items for internal controls, risk management, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you. It's, uh, good afternoon, Bill Tucker from Maynard Casterson. Um, here today, just kind of walked through, um, our internal controls, risk assessment, um, analysis that we have for you. Um, so, want to start by thanking all the departments that you guys are at the county. Everybody was great, um, to kind of work with, um, throughout the process of going through and documenting their controls and getting, gaining the understanding, uh, which is obviously imperative, you know, through this process that's, um, you know, everybody was, you know, there and available and, and able to have those discussions. So truly appreciate, um, everybody's work on that. Um, so let's just start off, I'm gonna kind of give you an overview of kind of what we did, um, and then we'll get into some of the, um, suggestions for improvement that we have for you as well. So, so we performed a review of the final policies and procedures of the county. Um, the purpose of reviewing, uh, their acts here, uh, and of oversight and internal controls. Um, our review included some of the following procedures. Um, interviews, uh, with key personnel, um, to the operations of the county. Uh, we determined areas that did not have, um, documented procedures and/or those that appear to have vulnerabilities. Um, we documented the current flow of business transactions as they are being recorded in the county. Um, and through this documentation, so what I have for you today is really that overview or high-level, um, analysis of those and, and some suggestions for improvements. We do have for every department's kind of what their processes are, um, and then those suggestions for improvement for each department as well. So, so I provided those to Tim, um, I'm gonna give him a final version of those, and then those will be passed along to, um, each of those departments as well. So just kind of a general overview of, of where we're at with it and, and what our suggestions are. So I would like to spend probably about ten minutes with you today and just kind of read through some of the more significant things that I have, um, within this document. Um, obviously, all these are, are, are the more significant items anyways, uh, but we'll kind of get to those really high-level ones. Um, and then obviously you guys, you know, can read through the rest of the documents of, of those key pieces. Again, on each of the departments, we would have maybe a little bit more, um, things, um, suggestions in each of those, um, items. Um, so again, we just kind of pull these into, to this document for the commissioners. So the first one, um, top of page two relates to, it's just called team training, is the, the topic at the top. So the county should document and train team members' responsibilities and position expectations. Um, everyone within the county should understand that the impact of their function on the overall process. Uh, given the transactions noted above and the continual efforts to bring records current, um, some laws may have altered, altered by, um, but not fully implemented or redefined. Uh, we recommend job subscriptions, uh, goals and expectations be revisited or put in place for all employees. Um, again, I know that's kind of a process that you guys are going through as you have, um, new jobs that are being posted. But again, kind of getting those things in place, um, and going forward, you know, with each of those, those jobs. That's just really a kind of, obviously a very high-level, um, recommendation there. Uh, the second one that I wanted to kind of touch on was at the bottom of page two, relate to your policies, um, within the county. Um, so we believe that it is management's best interest to establish formal written documents that will aid in the governance of county. Uh, in particular, we recommend the following policies be established. So there's a list of ten or eleven policies there, um, we have gone through and, um, provided, uh, templates and, and drafts of, of a number of those policies, um, for the county. Um, I know you guys are going through and have adopted some of those even the last, uh, a couple of months, um, as well. So that is, again, things that we identified as, as we went through our procedures and those policies that we, we, need to be looked at, um, and maybe even put in place in some cases where maybe there wasn't a policy, um, in place for you already, so. Uh, moving to the third page, uh, related to bank reconciliation, so it's the second main topic down there. Um, kind of read through that first point that we have on bank reconciliations. Uh, with the transition and staffing noted above, as well as the trans, transition to BSNA software, uh, bank reconciliation process has gone, undergone significant changes. Uh, we recommend the following processes be put in place immediately. Um, bank statements should be retrieved from the bank website and reviewed by the treasurer before being provided to the revenue clerk. Uh, this review should include a review of the bank sequence and the reasonableness of transactions. Uh, the reconciliation should be performed within fourteen days of month end within the BSNA software. Uh, once prepared, the bank reconciliation should be provided, uh, to the treasurer for review. So again, you know, one of the main, you know, internal control processes that you guys have within the county is that bank reconciliation process, again, kind of that, that overview of, of those, um, transactions that are on the bank statements as they come in, but then that reconciliation to the general ledger, and then again, going to the treasurer, um, for that final review and sign off and approve on those. Uh, so just obviously something that's very key, um, to the overall process. Now, I do recognize with the bank reconciliations, obviously you guys had a transition in the current year from Ponsum to BSNA. So, um, I'm actually in the process of helping, uh, the treasurer's office with that initial bank reconciliation, um, and trying to get, uh, those bank reconciliations caught up to date, um, as well. So, so that is a process, but I think as, as we'll drop to dates, um, again, getting them performed, uh, as quickly as possible after the end of the month, uh, will allow for better internal controls. Uh, the next couple that I have for you, three that I want to go through and discuss, uh, relate to payroll. So it's still in the middle of page three, um, and then we'll jump to top of page four. Uh, so the county for all our employees outside the sheriff's office utilizes a physical punch card system. Uh, these cards are summarized by the department head, all of which are provided to the clerk's office. Uh, these hours are manually entered into the, entered by the chief deputy clerk into the BSNA system. Uh, this process creates a time-consuming for both the department heads and the chief deputy clerk and creates a risk for information to be inaccurately, um, entered. Um, the county should consider using electronic, um, time card system, which can be integrated within BSNA. Uh, this would increase controls over the payroll process and reduce administrative time for staff as well. The next suggestion relates to compensation, comp story time, or, yeah, yes, yeah, sure.
Oh. We would, uh, are you, uh, are you recommending that we do this, uh, by way of computer rather than a, uh, a manual card or something like that?
Right, yep. Yep, something that's electronic, so again, so it automatically calculates those number of hours for you.
You'd sign on when you came to work.
Yep.
And the computer and then.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, something like that process, so again, so, again, it's taking away a lot of the administrative burden of somebody going through and manually key, you know, figuring out like, oh, how many hours does this person work for the two weeks? Um, and that process is going through, you know, multiple times.
If it has to be separated, certain departments to different lines of business, the department head would do that.
So, yeah, I think, you know, that could be, you know, should be incorporated into all the different departments, um, so, you know.
I, I, I would just say that, I, if, if they do, if, if an employee does two different tasks.
Oh.
That pay sub, pay differently.
Right.
Uh, would the department head then divide those hours that way?
You know, there's ways within the, um, payroll softwares to be able to do that. So you should, could be able to go in and determine or allocate your time right up front. I'm saying, okay, well, it's four hours on this job and four hours on that job.
That's why.
And it would, you know.
Department has to do that, or, uh, oh, the, the deputy clerk to do that.
So it really depends on, um, what that process would be. You know, typically what I would see is that it's actually being done by the employee, um, if they are able to or know what the allocation is. So again, if it's fifty percent of my time, I know that four hours, I work on this for four hours and that.
Well, I, I know that in some cases we have grants that pay for certain hours.
Great.
So we want to be able to track that.
Sure, that's fine.
You know, I mean, that, maybe not a, a weekly basis. I mean, we track it weekly, but we would summarize it at the end of the year or something like that, because we would imagine that the, the entity providing the grant's gonna want to know how many hours put toward it.
Definitely.
And just tell them, well, whatever you thought we should, we did.
Right.
Uh, that's not the answer I like to hear.
Right. Yeah, they definitely want to know it's three hours on that day.
Or, or, I didn't, we accumulated so many hours, yeah.
Yep.
Just.
Yeah, really obviously looking for, you know, things that, you know, can reduce the administrative burden on those. Uh, the next suggestion there was that comp story time, um, is currently tracked by the individual department heads outside the accounting system. Um, there's, what we found is there's really no consistent policy, um, as to the amount of time employees may accrue, um, being used. Um, so our suggestion there is, uh, countywide policy for use of the comp story time, um, should be implemented as, as part of the personnel manual, manual. And again, tracking that's within BSNA, um, would be the suggestion there as well.
Well, I guess it's just, that relates to the question I just had. There's a separation of time right there.
Right.
A separate time, so the department head would then enter that into the system.
Well, you would, typically what you would see is the employee would, you know, go through and put in like, okay, well, I'm using two hours of my comp time, or I'm comping whatever time, you know? Could be right into the, built into the system.
Shouldn't the department head be aware of?
Yeah, so the department head or that type of thing would be the approval process, right? So, you know, they would go through, the employee would enter it in, and then the department head would be approving that, um, time that's being used.
Yeah, and then the deputy clerk would not issue, issue pay until all those.
Right.
Acknowledgement to me.
Yep, until those controls are put in place, you know, are in place. When those controls are placed, it doesn't go to that deputy clerk for payment until it's all approved.
All right.
All right. Uh, top of page four. Okay, I'm just trying to think what this is really do. So after the payroll is run currently, uh, there's no review of any final reports, uh, by the clerk. Um, to reduce the risk of inappropriate payments, uh, we recommend that the clerk or the county administrator should review the final payroll register and document the review approval. So again, reviewing it and then initially signing off that, that review and approval is being made. Like, big one there, I guess, is obviously, you know, you know, fictitious employees, you know, like be on the list, okay, well, I don't know who that even is, you know? Um, so identifying those through that review approval process is something quick.
Which happens in some cases.
Yes, that's happened.
You have seen that.
That's why there's recommendations for that type of stuff, for sure. Yep. Uh, let's see, the next one I have for you relates to, uh, the. Uh, let's see, the next one I have for you relates to uh, the deposits. Middle.
Backup will.
Page four, yeah, yeah.
The last paragraph of page three there.
Yep.
I'm just wondering if that's me.
I don't know. That's you.
I have been, I have been buying county insurance for a hundred percent of the cost for the last couple of years.
Right.
Uh, up until July.
Okay.
Ordered a sixty fifth birthday, so I went on Medicare.
Okay. So maybe that policy.
I don't have to do that.
That's addressed already.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So potentially it could be you. I don't, I don't know. We don't, I didn't. Um, I actually didn't write that up myself and so, but but yeah, if that was.
All right.
You then that was.
Those no names.
It's been addressed. Yeah, I think the thing that's, you know, obviously.
I don't think any of you guys were buying insurance.
Having that discussion with the the attorney, make sure that, you know, legality is is correct. I think the other thing potentially that you guys could run into in some of those situations, even though you're paying a hundred percent, sometimes. That amount that you're paying is less than you could buy it on the market and that affects other rates because, you know. People are paying more for theirs because yours is included in that policy.
Start that rumor.
So that is situations that you run into and one on one person, it's not, doesn't come in a huge issue, hundred people. You know, figure issue, we can, we can see the impacts of it um, across the board, so.
Well, we did look at that.
Good.
Okay. When uh, we looked at that a couple of years ago about offering insurance to retirees at their cost.
Yep.
And that that was one of the questions, would that affect the the fate tone, you know?
Definitely, yep.
And that's, I think that's the reason why we didn't vote, right?
I think there's increased liabilities too, something like.
Yeah. A lot of that checks there. Um, so middle of page four um, on the deposits. So run recommendation here. Um, so. Payments that came in by by the way of cash or check are currently physically deposited on pure act basis. Uh, the county should consider utilizing a check scanner. Uh, for all payments received by the way, check again to reduce the risks associated with cash deposits. The county. Um, they also wish to consider using a bank courier um, service to have such deposits picked up. Or ensuring that the deposits made at least to people um, for the county accompany the deposits to the bank.
Um. Would that courier pick up at different departments?
So probably everything would come to the treasurer's office like it does currently. Centralized and then they would come to the treasurer's office for that deposit.
Because we've got some people. Going distances to get to the treasurer's office by themselves with large amounts of currency.
Right.
It's a security.
Yeah, I guess.
A security issue more than a an accounting issue.
Sure, yep, definitely. So potentially, I mean, in some of those cases, you might talk to the bank courier about that option as well.
Okay.
Again, you know, I tried to, we tried to put on this, you know, that's the last one I really want to touch base with you on, but um. You know, what we tried to do on this report for you was really trying to summarize those high level ones um, that we came from each department. Um, and then we'll be providing those to the departments themselves. Um, and having those suggestions built in. Uh, to their separate reports as well. Um, also, the county will have all that electronically. So. As processes um, or controls are put in place over in the future, obviously, that's your document. So you guys are just adding in, you know, to those. Those over the future as as you kind of go as well.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, just uh, the companion documents Bill's talking about, the departments are ten of those. An idea volume wise and you've got a list of policies in here, some of which we've already adopted, but we'll start rolling those out at the next committee, the whole. Particularly as they relate to federal monies and and the uh, policies that we're going to need to comply with there. Uh, but you'll start seeing this coming out now pretty regularly and will, most of this will be able to implement relatively fast. Uh, there's some things uh, that may. Result some processes we have to take a look at internally, but um, right having the roadmap and knowing what we're doing. Very pleased with the report.
Thank you.
I didn't see anything on there related to like county properties, like any policies, procedures. Is that something that was looked at at all?
Properties, like what, I mean, give us to me an example of.
Um.
Just thinking if we even have like an example of policy.
I guess I'm not really. Pardon me?
Real estate properties or like.
Any county properties.
We own.
Things we uh, things we own, I guess.
Capital asset, like uh, owning the building or like policy for that.
Vehicles, is that what?
Yeah, any uh, equipment, vehicles, um, uniform, I I guess I don't, I don't, any type of county properties, like policies, procedures. I didn't see anything in here. I mean, because there's been some questions as far as um, retiring county properties, turning in county properties. Um, you know, what to do with them, where where the funds go then, where the balance goes then.
So I know we do have, you know, a a template that we've given to you for the capital asset, useful life and disposal property or policy. Um, again, that's more looking at, you know, your capital assets, your long, your your larger, you know, pieces of equipment that you're purchasing. So if you're purchasing. Um, let's just say, you know.
An automobile.
Yeah, an automobile. Okay, that's, what's the policy for that? How is that capitalized within the financial statements and what's the disposal process for it? Um, so that would be, you know, part of that's um, specific policy.
Okay.
On that one. And that one typically, I guess, I'm not sure on the example, but it's probably typically something that's, you know, five thousand dollars or greater. Uh, where you're looking at those capitalization thresholds on those.
So, or do we have something in place for that now?
We do have a surplus properties policy so that as far as. Say, we no longer need this table. How do we get rid of it? It's not somebody just taking cash for, but we we actually. Have our inventory, we go through that, but then you assign me the responsibility of finding some way to like through public auction or something like that to. Dispose of it. Um, of course, we want to try to find other uses internally before we do that. Case in point would be those file cabinets we discussed a few meetings ago. Uh, if we can repurpose those, we definitely will. But if it comes to. Vehicle that we need to uh, relieve ourselves of that, that we have a policy in place that not only. How do we dispose of that? But how do we track it?
That's what I meant, the tracking system of of this process.
Well, I mean, it's still like, we just bought that one one. Well, there was an old one one. So, you know, the question comes up, well, who got it? And how did they get it, you know? Was it a? My brother in law?
Something very simple, but we should be able to track that.
Sure, yeah, definitely.
I think uh, we were talking about asset management, um, marketing or. Looked at. Was your, was was your study in part of that or not?
So we didn't really dig into the capital assets and the the asset management piece of it. Uh, so we didn't really look at those specifically. Again, we're looking at more of those, you know, the, you know, the cash receipts that were coming into each of those departments, kind of what those processes were. And then. You know, the dispersments going out for those payroll or AP um, dispersments. They didn't really dig into that um. Specific piece related to like inventory control or, you know, asset.
Okay.
Based just on financial.
Yeah.
Is there any, was there any major red flags pop off that puts us into any kind of thick with the state of the feds?
Um, I think the biggest issue, I think that was addressed on.
But this all started because the city stepped in and talked to us.
Right.
So we we went on, ventured out to get.
Yep.
The R R P for this.
So I think the biggest, you know, issue that could be out there um, is uh, page two under the Parks Recreation related to their um. The Ochimaw County uh, nature park and the five one three C three uh, status.
Yeah.
So I think that, again, that's.
I wanted to talk to you a little bit about that.
That's, you know, potentially, you know, something that's out there that, you know, has more impacts, you know, more negative effect.
We don't operate the bits by ones. There is a group, there is a group that's a five one C three that supports it.
Right, the Friends of the Deer Refuge.
Right, and they donate money towards it, but they don't do, they don't have a operation of the facility. Is that how it read when you were looking it up? Because it's county owned. I mean, you know, county owns the real estate, everything.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure on the, again, that the Friends of the Deer Refuge components is the one that. I believe had the five one C three status revoked uh, in twenty twenty. So again, kind of that relationship there between those, between the county and that group. Is just figure out, okay, well, what is that relationship? And, you know, if they've had their five one C's three status revoked. What impacts does that have on the county?
But, okay, well.
So again, that's that's something that's.
I sit on the park, correct?
Yeah.
And I've been right there since the formation of the five one. So um. Yeah, I just uh. Make sure that that is a separate entity from the park itself. And just a donating or, you know, right? Oh. Okay, all right, we'll take what.
So obviously, there's a couple other, you know, suggestions, discussions to have with uh, the county attorney on, uh, that you guys.
I guess, looking at this and reviewing this, I mean, I thought it would be much worse. Honestly, I thought a lot of this stuff was was pretty, I'll say common sense, but makes sense. Um, and policies and procedures, we've discussed job descriptions, everything that aspect we knew needed updated. Um, I I guess I thought this would be much worse after our audit and all the questions after the audit. I thought that's how this got started. Um. Am I wrong there?
You're not. And uh, recall the very first conversation or very first subject that Bill addressed for bank recs and it continues to be foreign in our site. Uh, but we are making progress. Uh, I think you'll find a lot more detail and I think a lot more helpful information in the supplemental. Documents the departments will receive.
Okay.
And that's, that's what really from where I sit uh, is where the real value of this comes. This, that's.
This is just a very brief summary.
But when we have the. Internal controls by department, there no longer is any question what we're going to do. A dollar is taken in at building department. Where does it go and how does it get there? How do we account for it? How do we make sure it got to where it needed to go? Uh, so those types of processes, I think is where this document is really going to pay off for us. Uh, and then there's no question, even when the auditors come in in the future about what happened. We had that uh, finding from, what's it, twenty nineteen about the uh, sale of the gun. Why was that wrong? While there was really no guidance anywhere and now there's pretty solid guidance about what happens when any funds are brought in. Be cash check or otherwise. Uh, and that's where I think again, the protection of the county gets really enhanced.
And the ability to track that.
And the ability to track it.
So how do we go forward with getting a electronic time card system for all county employees?
Um, B S and A actually has a module uh, to do that. So we'll talk to them about it. Uh, there are other products, independent products on the market that are compatible with B S and A two. So we'll, we'll take a look to find what's going to work best for us. Um, but if we can keep it all in the B S and A family, I think that's probably going to be our most efficient option. Uh, I can't tell you how how much manual labor would be relieved in the clerk's office.
Huge.
If the calculations are done, they're entered once, department head says, yes, they are approved. It's just like the seamless tax when it goes from one person to the next. Ultimately, it stops at the chief uh, deputy clerk's office. But all the calculations are complete. So all the overtime is in there, you have the comp time is accounted for, the regular time is there, the deductions are all there. Okay, print the check, you know, it it makes it so much easier. And the chances of error of transposing numbers because it's only being entered the one time is virtually wiped out. So there's a lot of benefit to doing it. Of course, as B S and A will tell you, that comes with a small fee. So I'll have to find out what that is and and then determine.
Time savings and offset that. My last job is just walk in, open up the screen and put in and out there.
We have, we have a system right now at my job that uh, we clock in right on our phones.
Yeah.
It knows where you're at and when you clock in and it keeps track of all your time. You can, but you can call in through the phone, through the app, maybe with pretty much everything through it. I'm sure that B S and A has probably got it, some type of um. Similar system.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For me, for B, we got the inmate healthcare services.
Okay, we actually have one of the vendors here that made a proposal.
Hi.
Good afternoon. Hi, this is Tina. I am the current um, county jail um, nurse. This is my attorney slash husband. Um. Um, I'm just here basically to answer any questions that any of you may have in regards to my proposal. Um, I'm sure that it's um, probably significantly less than you're used to seeing and um, I have any. I have answers to as to why that is the situation. So if there's anything that you'd like to know, you can ask.
So let me lay the groundwork here for what we're looking at. We have a current agreement. Uh, there, well, pass, I believe is the company and our current agreement is in effect right now. Uh, comes at a cost of one hundred seventy six thousand thirty four dollars and sixty cents per year. So that's the foundation we're working from. Um, you may recall from prior conversations, when the jail lieutenant was here, there is some level of dissatisfaction with our current provider. Uh, and then we'll get into all the details. We are not the only ones having issues with that provider. Uh, other counties have had similar things that have happened. Uh, so also with the price tag on something like this, it definitely is worthwhile bidding this out. At least every few years to make sure that we're paying a competitive amount. Um, there were two proposals received, both proposals meet the minimum qualifications that we put in our R F B. Uh, just going in alphabetical order, the proposal from Advanced Healthcare uh, came in at one hundred eighty four thousand three hundred forty nine dollars sixty one cents. With the option of paying an additional fifty five thousand dollars for some pool coverage, which would group us in with some other clients of theirs in terms of. How we pay for some of the services that are are needed. The proposal from uh, Tina, your last name again.
Demarc.
Demarc, I know you pronounced that wrong. Uh, there is a base uh, cost to that uh, program at one hundred nineteen thousand five hundred forty dollars. In reviewing this with the jail lieutenant, we also uh, took note of the additional twenty hours on site that were posed in that contract at uh, thirty nine thousand five twenty. Which would bring, if we took that option, bring the total cost to one fifty nine sixty, so one hundred fifty nine thousand sixty dollars. Now, a couple of things, um, is uh, Ms. Demon is represented, she's already there. She knows the lay of land of the facility. She knows. The procedures and and how the facility operates or advanced uh, would have definitely a learning curve on that. It's not to say all jails are that different, but I think there are probably enough differences uh, with our facility that there would definitely be a learning curve. Uh, Lieutenant, uh, Oger was definitely satisfied with the proposal that was presented. Again, all of the uh. Items that we asked for in the R F B are included, so definitely meets our minimum qualifications. And I'm prepared to recommend that we proceed with the additional twenty hours so that we have the twenty hours on site per week. Uh, fifty two weeks of the year, which will help uh, at least alleviate some of the responsibility from our corrections officers when it comes to. Uh, providing the healthcare to those who are lodged in our facility. And this contract would begin October one.
I think that's on the other contract, yeah.
Right.
Also, with the additional twenty hours that we proposed, um, I did list, um, that I'm sure you can see the benefits of having. A nurse for a sixty hour week. Um, it's amazing when you're there and you're passing medications. The inmates see you. It reduces the amount of electronic kites that they send. It reduces the amount of grievances that are sent to the lieutenant because dissatisfaction because they are not seeing a nurse. Just that face to face alleviates so much of that. Um, the benefits are the nurses there. To assess the inmates when they come in. Um, so the assessment is being done in immediately. We do have fourteen days to assess inmates. That never happens. Um, I've been there for four years. They're assessed within two to three days if it's over the weekend. And myself or the other nurse is not there. Um, if we have anybody on alcohol or drugs. If we have anybody on alcohol or drug protocol, that is initiated immediately, which, which is huge with our inmate population. Also, as far as medications, we have a lot of inmates that are on antipsychotic, antidepressant meds. They get started on that immediately. Um, there's just several benefits to having, um, versus 40 to 60. We do it 40. I do it, I'm doing that currently 40 hours. But it's just, would be a benefit to have the additional hours and it would reduce a lot of, um, issues that may come about. ER visits, um, I would be there or the other nurse, um, would be there to assess this, um, to alleviate going to the ER, which is at the cost of the county. So there are several, um, bullet points that we did put in there, advantages to having the additional 60 hours. Or excuse me, additional 20 to bring it up to 60. Pardon me.
So that would provide seven days a week.
Correct.
Coverage.
Correct.
You're, you're an LPN, correct?
Correct.
I, I was thinking like in the last year or two, at least since I, I, I've been here, which hasn't been that long, but I, I thought you had gotten your RN.
I was in school. Yes, I was in school. I have two more semesters.
Okay. Cause I thought there was a significant raise because you had received your RN.
No, I'm sorry. You're, you're referring to Heather Wenzel.
Okay.
Yeah. No, no, you're referring, she, um, is no, she no longer works for the company.
Okay. So how long, how long have you been with the company? I'm sorry.
Um, it'll be four years, um, the first of January, so three and a half. Um, I currently work for WellPath.
Okay.
Um, actually the other nurse, Lori Finney, who was in, she is also part-time. She works for WellPath. There was nothing when WellPath was notified that the contract was not going to be renewed. There was nothing to bring us to another site. So this is when I decided that maybe I should put in a proposal and, uh, in a bid. So.
So there's no legality issues with, and I don't know this, so I'm, I'm asking, there's no legality issues with an LPN does? How often does the medical director have to visit the facility?
The medical director, which is Dr. Natoli, which has already agreed that if I do get the bid, he will stay with us, which is covered in, um, the amount. Um, he is just required to be available via phone, via teleconference.
Okay.
Via fax. He does have the ability, um, to come up once a week. But if there is no need for him to come up once a week, he does not, he is not required to come up once a week. He just has to have the availability that if I have an issue with an inmate, that he can come up or he can talk to this inmate via teleconference, telephone, etc.
He doesn't have to sign off on the charts on your assessments?
He does. He does. Once a week, those are faxed to him. The front and the back are faxed to them and he signs off of those. Um, I'm in constant communication with him via faxes. Um, if an inmate comes in, he has medications. He has an issue that is very specifically written out in a form that is then in turn faxed to him. The turnaround time in, for that is within an hour. Um, so it's all communication and this is how it is with WellPath as well. Um, that's how he has operated with WellPath, um, via faxes, telephone. Um, but if I do meet him, we had a case in January where I needed him to come up and physically see and then, or excuse me, an inmate. Um, just to that face-to-face with the doctor, even though I had been in communication with him. So he comes up, he's readily available to come up. He is located in Saginaw.
So on top of that cost, which would be 159.60, we have to provide the liability as well?
No.
You provide the liability?
I, I, I provide the liability for myself and two other nurses.
Okay.
And then also for the doctor. Currently, right now with the WellPath contract, they provide, WellPath, um, is given, um, $13,000 for a pharmaceutical cap. So in turn, the county is still paying for that pharmaceutical. After $13,000, it's billed back to the county. So it basically, it's just the $13,000 is in the contract, which the county is paying anyways. If you go above and above, above and beyond that $13,000 for the pharmaceutical, it's billed to the county. In that contract for WellPath, ER visits, doctor visits, um, which includes orthopedics, um, a foot doctor for diabetics. Um, Mobile X, which is our x-ray company that will come directly to the jail and provide x-rays, ultrasound. That's pretty much it. They don't do MRIs, but, um, and the pharmacy, the pharmacy, that all is being covered by Ogama County, even under the $176,000 a year contract with WellPath.
So you're going to be graduating when?
I have two semesters, hopefully, um, in May.
So then when is this, is this contract good for a year?
Three years.
Three years.
Three?
Questions?
Well, you know questions better than I do.
I, I just, I know. I mean, I just, uh, you obviously know the liability. I was, my, my concern is, is I, I thought you, until I was looking at this, I thought you were a registered nurse. I understand you're in, in the training and I hear you do a wonderful job, but from a liability standpoint, I'm just surprised that at some point in time, somebody doesn't have to do the physical assessments. I mean, I can give you an example, a, in the nursing homes. A, a MD or DO has to do the initial assessments within 72 hours. I can see them anytime in between, anytime they're stay, but within 72 hours, an MD or DO versus a mid-level has to do that assessment. So I'm just surprised, but I guess these aren't being billed to the insurance. So that's taken out of the equation.
Correct.
Um, I'm just surprised there's not a liability with an LPN. I, I don't know what that would be. I, 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 well, no, go ahead, sir.
Just, just an observation. This is the way it's been going back to a WellPath contractor, contracted before that. Heather, for example, was an LPN through most of it. She became an RN right towards the end.
I think that's when I came into all of this. So that's.
Forty grand more. It cost us 40 grand more because she was an RN. And that was only because we were recommended to keep her on as, as her name. And then she didn't even stay? And we've been paying?
And again, this is nothing to do with you. I was shocked to see the, right. I, I was looking at your resume and I seen it said 2018 RN schooling. So then I didn't know if you had graduated or.
Um, I was going part-time. I had COVID. I, yeah, so there was.
I understand.
Um, and just so, um, Commissioner Scott, just so you're aware, um, that contract will not change when I get my RN. I'm not going to come back to you and say.
Well, that's good for three years. You really can't.
Well, no, I understand. I understand that, but I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Um, it's not like, you know, I'm going to come back and say, well, you know, I understand what you're saying as far as three years and I can't.
Yes.
So, um, yeah, so, um, between myself and Lori Finney, the nurse, um, that is currently working for WellPath, um, between her and I, we have probably about 45 years experience. She has case management experience, OB experience. She has worked in a long-term care. I, for 20 some years worked in the ICU and then, um, retired, um, and then picked up the WellPath job as a part-time job. And then it, when Heather left, um, my boss from WellPath asked me if I would step in. So since September of 2020, excuse me, 2019, 2020, um, I've been pretty much running that. Um, I do not see my district regional manager from WellPath. Um, I think I've seen her maybe a total of five times in three and a half years.
So is there anything, you could do injections, you do insulin. I, I know things have changed since I've been in that world. So I do, um, injections.
We have four inmates that are on antidepressant, um, injections, um, that they get once a month. Um, insulin. Um, I started, um, doing blood draws because the blood draws were being sent to the hospital. And I said, why are we doing this? This costs the hospital. So, uh, or excuse me, it costs the county. So I went to the hospital. I have all the supplies. So if an inmate needs, um, blood work done, I draw the blood work and then I take it down to the lab at the hospital. That's just.
So when you graduate in, in two, two semesters, hopefully, is there anything more that you'll be able to do as far as services?
Not as, not as far as, pretty much I'm doing everything now.
Hey. So.
Well.
And, and I read everybody's letters on here. I mean, it sounds like everybody's very happy with their services.
First way I heard from is the guy that.
Oh, his letter's in here, Mr. Oger?
Yeah. Well, yeah, he's just, he's just a general manager. He has a boss. I'd like to hear his boss.
I read his letter, um, recommendation.
I support town Oger. And I've seen her working over there, go over there pretty much every day and she does a wonderful job.
Well, I think you just, you deserve, your position deserves the opportunity to to say something.
Thanks.
Can you drop a resolution?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nice meeting you.
You as well.
We can do public comment beforehand if you would like to.
I have just a couple of things to comment.
Okay. Give us just a few minutes and, and we'll do public comment before we, uh, before we go into closed session. Okay, sir?
Thank you.
This is your 2022 budget.
All right. So we begin, um, early, hopefully early next week, you'll get an email from me with a budget proposal recommendation. I want to just tell you, um, I was quite relieved when I got into the new software, the BSNA software. Uh, it's phenomenal. It's everything they said it was in terms of putting the budget together. When we transferred our information over from Ponton, a lot of debris came over as well. So I've got some cleanup to do in there. You'll never see it, but they're just like phantom departments that are listed in there, uh, with zeros, but just general cleanup like that. But a couple of things I want to point out to you right now that, uh, you know, I really like it when a plan comes together. You, uh, adopted the policy a few months ago about reserves and fund balance. And that, that is really coming together nicely. Uh, one of the other components though, was the drawdown from the delinquent tax fund. And we said, again, about the time we did the audit, that it was time to start weaning ourselves from that. So the proposal you'll see from me will knock that off by 25% this coming year. You'll look at that. You may want to go higher. You may want to go lower on that percentage, but just you'll be able to do your analysis and uh, decide where you're most comfortable. The other thing that I know is on the top of many commissioners' minds is the road patrol fund and a lot of questions about what should the millage rate be coming in? Uh, the system gives me a year-to-date figure on where we are. There will need to be some transfers to account for, uh, a full year versus when we actually adopted this in April, I think it was. Uh, we moved the, the entire road patrol function over, which means, we've got to take some, some of the costs that have been allocated to general fund and put it in road patrol fund. But the bottom line is, the question was, what we need to assess the full mileage? And the answer is absolutely not. Uh, for two reasons. Uh, one, obviously we didn't spend as much. So there's going to be a huge fund balance in that fund. Second thing is, much to my surprise, the revenue that was brought in from the millage was actually quite a bit more. I say quite a bit, it's relative, but significantly more than what we projected it would be in the budget. There's actually going to be additional funding in there. And then with the growth in the taxable value for the coming year, it's an even higher number in terms of revenue that's produced. So you may be, uh, asked to reduce that millage as a starting point, uh, for a conversation by half or more, uh, because of the funds that will still be in there. So that'll be much clearer for you when you see this. You'll be able to see what that fund balance is projected to be. And then we can, uh, work backward from there in terms of what the millage should be assessed at. The, uh, initial pass, uh, going through, everything was already in balance. Uh, so I've got to go through yet and there are a few areas that I need to tweak, some requests that have been made, uh, to make sure that all the numbers are adding up. But it, again, the program made this much easier than what last year was, uh, in being able to use the, the live data and then make other, uh, projections to enter my numbers. Uh, I will put that off to you probably in a PDF format to save on space on the email. Uh, and then I would have been keeping copious notes in terms of what I did to draw your attention to very specific things, uh, that I'm recommending. Uh, and then we'll hopefully be right back on schedule in terms of having this adopted by the end of September.
Well, a concern as far as like discussing that millage, we're already into August 19th. Um, uh, when you, do you want to discuss that at next week's meeting? Do you want, when are you going to have this information in front of us?
Well, you'll have actually the information next week. Um, what we did, or following on the same template as last year, when you adopt the appropriation, you actually got the budget. In that resolution, you state what the military rates are going to be. So that has to be done by resolution. Anyway, we take care of it as a package. And so you'll see not only road patrol, you'll see the general fund, uh, and general operating millage. You'll see that commission on aging millage is in there. Um, there's veterans millage.
There's all kinds of.
It's just four or five of them in there that all play into this. So, uh, it's just good to deal with it all as a, as one. So whatever number we end up with in that budget for road patrol, it's, for instance, will dictate what that final millage rate would be. But it would all be adopted as a package.
So in order to have this all done by our timeframe?
It will be. Yeah. You'll, this will be on every agenda now through, uh, through September.
Just on committee of the holes or meetings as well?
Every, every meeting.
Okay.
We may as well just continue and, uh, I think it's going to be a little bit easier than what you've experienced in the past. At least it was for me. Uh, maybe it won't be because now there'll be time to dig into some of the finer points of it, but, you know, whatever it's, I, I just, I can't say enough about how this came together with this new program. It's, it's really nice.
So anything more on that? So we're going to move public comments.
I'd like to. Through talking, or Mr. Tucker and everything else, I'd like to bring out, point out to discuss. We're in the middle of uh, negotiation year. Uh, we're in the middle of, uh, a lot of different things, a lot of different factors, uh, new elect, everything. I think that we owe Tim some tools to work with. He, we're behind a little bit. I don't want to say we're behind, but he's got a, he's got a ton of tasks that he's been trying to work on all year and work. And one of the big things is the job description. And I know that's high on his priority list, but these, all these other tasks that have to be done, like the negotiations and everything else is getting in the way. There are companies out there that we can hire. They can give us job descriptions, at least boilerplate stuff. And just add a tool to his box.
What's in there? She's saying she was going to get some help from the state.
They decided to help us with the internal controls on it instead.
So they took care of the internal, the billing for internal controls?
Uh, 75% of that, yes. And then the other 25, we were going to pull from ARPA, which is.
Well, you and I talked about this a little bit. What, can you, can you?
Just, just quickly, what, what Commissioner Scott is suggesting is that we consider probably an RFP, uh, hire a firm to come in and do the job descriptions en masse. Now, we've been doing them piecemeal as positions have become open. I remember earlier this year, we did, uh, planning and zoning, uh, administration, job description. We did a secretary of the extension job description. Treasurer is going to have a new hire here. You'll have a job description for that. So as they've come up, we've dealt with them, but there probably is a need for somewhere around, you know, 60 to 70 of these job descriptions. Without them, as Mr. Tucker pointed out, uh, there is some question in some employees' minds about what they're doing. And even more importantly, how does it fit into the entire organization? Where do those relationships lie? The department heads having to recruit, what are the minimum experience requirements, minimum education requirements? What are the job expectations? All those are open questions because we don't have job descriptions. It becomes a very fundamental problem that, that just keeps cropping up. So the suggestion would be then that, you know, we put out the RFP, we hire the firm to, to just do them en masse. And we have them done probably over a six-month period, uh, even with a private firm. That's going to be a pretty big task in terms of, uh, developing something at the scale. But then the job is done. You see them all, you adopt them and then it becomes a maintenance, uh, matter from there. Uh, but having that tool there, we, we run up against it even during, uh, bargaining to try to. Uh, but having that tool there, we, we run up against it even during, uh, bargaining to try to figure out where's a, a fair place to place an employee on a pay scale. Well, without a job description, you really don't have anything to go from, uh, other than just what the department has says are the tasks, which that's, that's well and good, but that's not the same. It's not as firm. It's not as, uh, we don't have as much confidence in what we're doing. Uh, so, yeah, I mean, this would be a huge step forward for the organization if we were able to get that done. And, you know, you put on an R F P, that's not an obligation to do, that the prices come in and they're just too much. You don't have to accept any of the bets.
Well, my, my question is to you is, I mean, obviously, we, we've had, you have had a lot on your plate here in the last three months, definitely.
We knew that.
It's great, but even some unexpected things. Um, uh, this is going to be done. Negotiations will be done soon. And you seem to have an open door policy, which is nice. However, I'm sure that that also hinders your work from being done. Um, I try to be respectful. I typically try to call you and say, hey, I will be in Friday this time or, or, or. Do you find that the interference as well, um, hinders your, uh, um, workday or?
Or those that come in to visit, they're generally things that we really do need to talk about in real time. Uh, for instance, uh, we're going to, well, I'm not going to tell you, tell you that until we get into the closed session, but we do have something in closed session that just popped up, needed immediate attention, no question. Um, you know, Ray Blamer was in this morning and had a question about, uh, a new hire and how we process that. I would prefer to have that interruption.
Well, absolutely. I'm saying from a commissioner's standpoint, from, from us.
Not, not a problem.
Coming in, um, I know some of us visit you a little more frequently than others. Um, definitely, I mean, does that hinder your ability to get tasks done?
No, I guess, uh, in a word, no. I, I think that's as important as anything else I do. You're the bosses.
Is there, is there any way that we could, um, help out with maybe, uh, giving some of the, uh, other office, uh, staff some more hours to help you out, to get more tasks done?
Candidly, I'm, I'm kind of satisfied with the pace myself right now. Um, I mean, don't get me wrong. I don't want to turn down help. Uh, but at the same time, I, I think we're moving things along and, uh, yeah, I really rather have all the job descriptions done last week, but okay, it's just not in the cards. We'll get there. Um, right, when I took the job, I knew there was going to be a lot of long-term type projects like that. So yeah, I don't want to turn down the help, but at the same time, I think we're at a good pace. This, um, internal controls on it's a huge step forward for us. You know, I can't, again, express enough, uh, you know, how much value we're going to have in that. So, you know, a great step forward. Uh, I kind of like to have jobs to do into the future for job security, you know, so I. What do you do?
So I, I guess, again, I just want to be clear from a commissioner's standpoint. Do you prefer one of us to pick up the phone and say, hey, when's a good time to come in and chat with you? Or do you prefer us just to walk in and interrupt whatever you're doing to have a cup of coffee and talk for an hour?
I will leave that to your preference. I'm.
I'm asking you.
I'm not shy about telling anybody. I don't have time right now. I've got to go to do something. I'm not shy about that. So.
Well, I've had to go, I had to go to the I T department to have coffee before, because he isn't.
Okay, I wanted to ask.
Bottom line, if you're busy, tell him to get out.
Yep. I'll be diplomatic.
I'd like to see us go ahead with at least an R F P first. To see what it would cost.
I, I would agree with Commissioner Scott. Put the R F P out for the job descriptions and see what cost comeback is.
I don't, I don't think it's going to hurt, but I.
It's not going to hurt.
I, I'm.
And the department heads are going to be involved in that process, right?
Yeah, it's a pretty intense process as will the employees.
Well, that's best case. They know the job, but nobody.
Okay, so we're going to go to five, the public comment. On December tenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty seventy-seven to adapt rules of procedure that include a structure for public comment. Each meeting agenda includes two opportunities for public comment. The first public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A second public comment period is reserved for public statements on any manner or issue that is relevant and germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. Five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject matters. However, failure to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or dries a speaker. The board thanks you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Sir, come on up.
My name again is Jim or James D. Mudd. And I am an attorney. I'm here on behalf of the medical program involved. I just happened to hear a couple of things that I just wanted to make comment on. First of all, in, in all respect to you, when you read that policy or that, that resolution, you amp up pretty fast. I'm not sure where behind the podium is, because that's where I'm supposed to be standing.
Correct. In a, in a regular meeting, that would go, is there going to be a podium here? This is committee of the whole. So yes, that probably needs to be adjusted.
I would suggest that perhaps, at least for the time being, you, you put that with the agenda. In other words, put two stacks out there and have somebody.
It's supposed to be back there.
Right on the podium.
Yeah, it's supposed to be back there. Apologize. It is supposed to be back there so people can read that when they come in.
Brand new system.
I, I appreciate that. I'm just making an observation.
Yep.
Um, I also, uh, listened to the, uh, the stuff on risk management. Um, the question was asked by Commissioner Scott about property. Uh, wasn't sure if it was real property or personal property. Question arose in my mind, and it's just because I don't know the system. Do you have full, complete inventory of all county property? And is it updated semi-annually, annually, or any other time?
We seem to be finding stuff all the time, or at least I do. Um, Registered Eats actually just completed an inventory of all physical properties that the county owns. Uh, we actually had that.
Just, uh, just heard these.
Just a couple of days ago for the county.
Okay.
So, I mean, there are different parcels across the county that we own.
That was real estate.
That's real estate. I'm talking about how many tables and chairs do you have? How many of all these kinds of things? And then what you were raising, you know, how, what you, what can you do with that? You know, Mabel, I'm having a party, uh, this weekend, and I really need about, uh, twenty-five tables and a hundred chairs. Can I borrow the ones out of the commissioner's room and a couple of the other places? And, you know, those kinds of policies that maybe need to be in place so that you know how your property is being handled. And then as it ages out, you can take it off the inventory and you can, and there's the tracking you were talking about, and you can put the new newly acquired stuff on there. Just offer that up. Um, as far as this thing with the Aranac County and this inter-county train, I applaud you. I sure as heck hate to see Odoma County get roped in, uh, to, uh, to something that's just going to be applicable mostly in Aranac County. It's, it's almost like, you know, here you are, the big dog, but they're putting this great big rock around your neck, and you guys are going to be stuck with it, you know? Odd infinitum. Now, you said that, it, it sounds like it's too late to get a letter out to all the, all the. I don't know if you thought about it, but drafting a well-nice physician paper, publish it in the newspaper. Get it in the legal section. So at least people can pick up on it and, and, and get an idea. And at the same time, you make mention of this public meeting that you have coming up and make sure that you get advertising out for that public meeting so that people know to come to. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you for your public comment. Thank you for coming. Is there any other public comments? Come on up, sir.
I'm more than, I forgot to put something on the agenda.
Yeah. We, uh, Tim and I had spoke earlier and so I waited for public comment, but the vehicle that we use for, to do our field inspections, uh, for the equalization department, the transmission went out on it again.
Oh, no.
Uh, we, we've driven it about two hundred miles this year. The first trip out, uh, we had to have it towed back and battery and cables put on it. And so this time, and, and I don't believe we've got three thousand miles on that vehicle since the board put the last transmission. I checked with Diana in the clerk's office, and she said that when you had the transmission put in last time, it was a used transmission and Bruce's nephew did the repairs. And so I don't believe there's any warranty, or if there was, it's been over twelve months and that's expired out.
Oh.
But they went through to the chat or something.
It, it was, but I know that they put at least two transmissions when Howie had it as a vehicle and I, I think there was issues with the motor or something else. And so I, I don't know that I'd recommend putting more money into this vehicle. It's got a lot of miles and it's pretty expensive repairs. Uh, right now, we are using our personal vehicles and submitting for mileage reimbursement for the field work that we have to do, but uh, Tim and I had talked and I asked him on my budget, and I don't know, just to make the board aware that that vehicle is not working. I don't know if you want me to send it to get estimates for a repair for, to fix it or.
How many miles are on it?
I think about a hundred and seventy-five thousand or a hundred and eighty-five, somewhere, something like that.
I, I think we put it up for surplus auction.
So it's got a brand-new battery, like.
Might be worth more than the car, so.
So then are we going to continue to pay mileage? Are we going to look at a?
Mileage for sure right now.
For the short term.
Uh, Randy and I also talked about the thought of exploring even a lease program, uh, because the number of miles that they put on the vehicle, isn't that great? I mean, but it's absolutely necessary for the work they do, so it might be more economical to lease a vehicle, so we could do a comparison. Definitely need a vehicle, though, that will handle terrain, uh, so.
Absolutely.
You know, Ugo's not going to work, but.
It looks good.
Yeah, well, look at some lease programs.
Anything in that, or money?
This might be a tough match, um, but worth consideration.
Yeah. So yes, I know you're working on twenty twenty-two budget, and so what we presented originally, I think I already emailed Tim and amended, at least on reimbursing mileage, but they'll probably need to look at something different than this particular vehicle.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Sir, come on up.
I know I came in a little bit late here. I guess you already spoke about that drainage.
Your name, sir?
I'm Ken Mano.
Um.
We spy your last name.
M A N O. Um, my question is, are they going to make this website work? I went on there and it just comes up four oh four error.
Yeah, I don't think it's our website. What, what's the address?
So there's one for Ogoma and there's one for Aranac.
Yeah, they, they gave me the same error, too.
Um, it's to find out more information and where's the very bottom, uh, bottom, there's two websites. And neither one of them worked.
O C M I dot.
And I'm just wondering, what are my taxes going to go up for again? Because I, that doesn't tell you anything.
That's, that should be ours.
Which one is it?
O C M I dot U S.
That's our main.
That was working.
That one's working now? Okay, I tried it last night about a dozen times. It just got error.
Must have been a local issue.
So you got Aranac County and.
Well, to give you an idea, we're preparing a resolution.
Oh, yes, we are.
Okay, good, good. Um, one, one other thing, I know the mileage went through for the Road Patrol. Are they going to be addressing Clear Lake Race Track?
Do you want to?
I mean, you're not, you don't even feel safe going in your mailbox. I mean, you never see a sheriff down that road and everybody's doing ninety.
Which, Clear Lake Road?
Clear Lake Road. Oh, yeah. You see people go down Fairview and they're doing the speed limit. They hit Clear Lake Road, they're gone. And you never see a Road Patrol down there, except for maybe one of the one guys going home to lunch, I think. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
So, that will be addressed, though?
Your sheriff's sitting right, right over there. Any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? We are going to go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining agreement negotiations. Can I, and when we come out of, uh, closed session, there'll be no more business discussed. Can I have a motion to go into a session?
Oh, motion.
Give a motion with support to go into a closed session. Can I get a roll of my vote? Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Brad Vaughn.
Yes.
We're going to go into closed session at two forty-four for collective bargaining agreement negotiations.
You'll work this one start with, so you're. If you want to, it's your call.
It's freezing in here, too.
Yeah, I know.
Do you think that, yeah, does it be looking at that? Are you going to, you? Going to make a motion to adjourn at three oh four.
That's it, Tom. That's all, you have all the people?
Yep, that's it.
A motion with support, meeting is adjourned at three oh four.
Did you sign a couple of things?
Yep.
Where you go?
Yep, yep, yep.